Well, welcome to our fourth Bible study session on the book of Acts. We're going to be covering Acts, chapter eight, verse 26 through 10:48 this afternoon. So it's good to have each of y'all here with us. We were mentioning some prayer requests at the beginning of our time as we're waiting on folks to join and everything. And if y'all would remember Virginia, she's in the hospital right now and is in need of our prayers. She had some issues with her diabetes, I think. So remember her and Whirly, if you would. And I've also heard that Samantha is back home now after having a whole slew of issues. So if you keep Samantha in your prayers too. Well, let's pray. Gracious God, for the opportunity to join together in studying your word and in learning from one another as we go through it, we give you thanks. Be with us, we pray, oh Lord, and open our hearts, our minds, that we might hear your word in all of the ways that it challenges us and helps us to grow. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen. Well, welcome again. It's good to see y'all. We got all sorts of fun stuff today with the book of Acts. This is one of the most, other than the Old Testament book of Judges. I don't know if any of y'all have read it recently or not, but the book of Judges in the Old Testament, it's pretty fun, too. But other than that, I'm a real big fan of the book of Acts because there's just so much action happening. Imagine that being named the book of Acts, having all sorts of action. But we'll start our session like we've been doing. Are there any questions or comments or anything like that from the previous few chapters that we've been going through together? Or just thoughts that you've had through the week in anticipation of stuff today? Happy to address any of those?
This was interesting reading this week.
Yeah, yeah, it surely is, isn't it? We get such an interesting mix of stories here. We start off with the Ethiopian unit, and then we move to Saul, and then we move to Peter. And then we close with Peter and Cornelius. So there's some really interesting stories. One of the things that I really like to do is to read big chunks at a time. So like, I read the whole, all the readings for this week all at once. And it's really neat sometimes if you feel super holy one day, you can go through and read a whole book in one sitting. I often encourage folks to do that with the Gospels. Because it's really neat, the things that stand out whenever you do it that way. And reading a chunk at a time, kind of like what we have for this week in our discussion together, is a really neat thing. Because I'll tell you, one of the main, I kept hearing the same question and seeing the same tension come up in this over and over. And that is the question of who is in and who is out? And why? You know? Did any of y'all see that going through the readings? And you don't need to have read this ahead of time. I want to encourage people to be able to just join in whenever. It's not, and you don't have to have, you know, caught up with everything from the time before either. That's one of the nice things about the book of Acts is there's so many different things happening that we often can pick up right where we are and get some good stuff going, regardless, even if we're fresh on the scene. But that question of insider versus outsider, that tension, and who can belong and who can't? And why? And all of that really comes to a head in our lesson today. And I said in our first session, as I was trying to kind of introduce the book a little bit, that there's really the central character in the book of Acts, if I could say, you know, use a literary term like that, is a central character, would be not a character at all, but the Holy Spirit. And the way that the Spirit moves, the Spirit could, if I was doing, if I was making a movie about the book of Acts, then I would try to find a person or something, some way of representing the Holy Spirit in this and having that as a character in the midst of it. Because it's, the Holy Spirit is just so active in this book. And the Holy Spirit becomes a partner in dialogue, too, with these readings as we go through. Well, let's start. I will go to share my screen, and I'm going to mute everybody, but feel free to unmute yourself if you need to do so, to ask a question or make a comment or whatever. Feel free to unmute yourself. I just thought I would do that because it'll keep the recording a little more stable. So I'm going to go through and share my screen with you all so that we could have our scripture reading up in front of us. And so we're on Acts, chapter eight, verse 26. I'll start reading for us today, and then I'll ask for a volunteer later on, okay? "Then an angel of the Lord said to Philip, 'Get up and go towards the south to the road that goes down from Jerusalem to Gaza.'" This is a wilderness road. "So he got up and he went, and now there was an Ethiopian eunuch, a court official of the Candace, queen of the Ethiopians, in charge of her entire treasury. And he had come to Jerusalem to worship and was returning home. Seated in his chariot, he was reading the prophet Isaiah. Then the Spirit said to Philip, 'Go over to this chariot and join it.' So Philip ran up to it and heard him reading the prophet Isaiah. He asked, 'Do you understand what you're reading?' He replied, 'How can I unless someone guides me?' And he invited Philip to get in and sit beside him. Now, the passage of the scripture that he was reading was this, 'Like a sheep, he was led to the slaughter; and like a lamb, silent before its shear, so he does not open his mouth; in his humiliation justice was denied him. Who can describe his generation, for his life was taken away from the earth.' The eunuch asked Philip, 'About whom may I ask you? Does the prophet say this, about himself or about someone else?'" And then Philip began to speak, and starting with this scripture, he proclaimed to him the good news about Jesus. "And as they were going along the road, they came to some water, and the eunuch said, 'Look, here's water; what's to prevent me from being baptized?'" He commanded the chariot to stop, and both of them, Philip and the eunuch, went down into the water, and Philip baptized him. When they came up out of the water, the Spirit of the Lord snatched Philip away. The eunuch saw him no more and went on his way rejoicing. But Philip found himself at Azotus, and as he was passing through the region, he proclaimed the good news to all the towns until he came to Caesarea." So we'll stop right there for now. And I, gosh, what a story, huh? Many of y'all will remember your former associate pastor here, Brad Cunningham. I'm sure, let me unmute everybody and unshare my screen for a minute. Let's see. Well, it'll take me a second. Okay, unmute, oh, there we go. So y'all remember Brad, or many of you do at least. Most people who know Brad remember his insatiable love of all things sci-fi and Star Wars. And so Brad and I were at Duke together, and one day I was going down the hallway, and I turn a corner, and there is Brad in full unitard thing of Captain Kirk from Star Trek, you know, like that whole like black and red suit thing. And I was just like, oh my gosh, Brad? And he's like, yeah, yeah, I'm going to eat supper with Shatner tonight. And I was like, as in William Shatner? And he says, yeah, yeah, I get to sit at the head table. I was like, how do you get to do that? Because it was some Comic-Con thing. And he's like, oh, anybody can do it for 300 bucks. And I was like, oh, okay. But Brad, he would get carried away with stuff a little bit. And that phrase, carried away, kind of reminds me of this passage. Did y'all see that or hear that at the end? As the Spirit of the Lord snatched Philip away, and the eunuch saw him no more and went on his way rejoicing, but Philip found himself in Azotus as he was passing through the, like, that's 30 miles away from where he was. So that's kind of crazy. It's like, the thing that I remember so much about Star Trek was Beam Me Up Scotty and the transporter ray. Really am kind of upset that we don't have that technology mastered yet, you know? Or at least in some degree. Like, that would be so much easier than flying everywhere or traveling or whatever. Just transport yourself, you know? But that part right there just seemed, you know, it just kind of took me aback when I saw it. So a couple of things I want to point out. Number one, this Ethiopian eunuch, that's a word that we don't talk about much. And so the Candace, the Candace is not, I mean, we think of Candace as a name, but the Candace is kind of like the court of the Pharaoh. It's a name for the queen of the land of Kush. And anybody know where Kush is? I mean, you probably can guess from the fact that we've been calling him the Ethiopian unit, that it's Ethiopia. The old name for Ethiopia was Kush, K-U-S-H. And some people don't realize this, but one of Moses' wives was a Kushite. And sometimes it's spelled with a C instead of a K. But one of Moses' wives was a Kushite, and Miriam was really upset, Moses' sister, about the fact that he married her, not because she was a Kushite, but because she was a Gentile, you know? Like, it had nothing to do with the fact that she had very dark skin. It had to do with the fact that she was not Jewish. And then God gave Miriam leprosy, and she was only healed by Moses' prayers. There's some crazy stuff in the Bible. But this Ethiopian eunuch, the Candace, the queen of Ethiopia, she had a very peculiar rule. Since she was the queen, nobody else that was a man who served in her court was allowed to serve in all their manhood, so to speak. And so whoever served in the Candace's cabinet, as we might think of it, if they were male, they were all castrated.
Oh.
Yeah. So that's what a eunuch is. I think it's rather funny as a, just the word itself, because the Greek EU, if it's on the beginning of something, means good. Anyway, so this guy, this Ethiopian eunuch, he's not given a name, we're just told of his title. And he was like the secretary of the treasury type guy. Or if he was in the British Parliament, they would call him the Chancellor of the Exchequer. They have such better names for things than we do. But so the Treasury Secretary is going up to Jerusalem to worship. However, this guy would not have been allowed to, as we would say, become a member of the temple. Because there's some strange, there's some really strange rules in the book of Leviticus. If you ever are bored and you want to look at some of them, there's a lot, and it gets kind of crazy. But one of the rules in the book of Leviticus, in this section that we would broadly term sexual purity laws, says that if you're a male and your private parts, isn't it funny to talk about this stuff? Of Bible study, this is the Bible for you. So if you were a male and your private parts were not, you know, all there, let's say, you weren't, you were considered ritually impure and unclean. And you would not be allowed to be a part of, you wouldn't be allowed to convert to Judaism, so to speak. And so this Ethiopian unit is obviously one of those, so the Jews at the time would call these folks godfeers. But they wouldn't, they would be allowed to go inside the courtyard of the temple, but they wouldn't be allowed to be in the temple proper. And they wouldn't have been allowed to participate in a lot of the rituals, you know, like the Day of Atonement and all that sort of stuff. They would have had to remain outside the fold. They were allowed to kind of, you know, be somewhat close, but they were never allowed to be a full part of Judaism. So this guy, the Ethiopian eunuch, he's a godfeer, obviously. I mean, he's, when he's riding in his chariot, he's headed back to Ethiopia. Now, this would have been a journey even in a chariot that would have taken months and months. And so, and would have cost a lot of money. And so this guy is clearly devoted to the tenets of the Jewish faith. He's reading the scriptures. He's apparently reading it out loud even as he's going by. And Philip is told to go over to the chariot and to talk to the guy. So he runs over, and I'm picturing this scene with this Ethiopian eunuch in his chariot reading, and Philip running up next to him, you know? He says, hey, what you doing? And he's like, oh, I'm reading this passage. And he's like, oh, do you understand what you're reading? And he says, well, how can I unless somebody tells me? And so he's like, come on up here and sit down with, that was nice of him to, you know, allow Philip to get up in the chariot and ride along rather than having to hoof it down the road as he was doing. And so it's, the passage that he was reading was one of the suffering servant passages from Isaiah. Isaiah 52:13 through 53:12 is this passage. And so this is interesting because Philip takes, he goes from what the guy knows and then brings that around to talk to him about Jesus. And so let's pick up back here on verse 35. "Then Philip began to speak, and starting with scripture, he proclaimed to him the good news about Jesus. And as they were going along the road, they came to some water, and the eunuch said, 'Look, here's water.'" And this is, this is really interesting here. He says, "What is to prevent me from being baptized?" He doesn't say, "Would you baptize me?" He says, "What's to prevent me from being baptized?" This guy is so used to being excluded from things that he wants to know what it is that's going to be, you know, keeping from being a part of this Jesus movement. Isn't that intriguing? I mean, this guy has been just so, like, shunned. He's not, he's not really male, you know? I mean, as far as most people in the ancient world would be concerned. He's, you know, he's got this prestigious job and office, but he doesn't really fit in anywhere, does he? And so he instantly thinks after, you know, hearing Philip's sermon and stuff, that there's got to be something that's going to, you know, make him an outsider in the church, too. And so he says, "What is to prevent me from being baptized?" And the answer, nothing, you know? Nothing's really to prevent him from being baptized. And so Philip baptizes him. "And when they come out of the water, the Spirit of the Lord snatched Philip away, and the eunuch saw him no more and went on his way rejoicing, but Philip found himself at Azotus. And as he was passing through the region, he proclaimed the good news to all the towns until he came to Caesarea." I, I'm just, this passage is a fascinating thing whenever we think about inclusion and exclusion from the community of faith. I was saying in our opening moments together that if you, if you read this whole chunk of our lessons today, that we get so much about inclusion and exclusion. And we get so many different things about, you know, why people can't be a part of something or shouldn't. And so keep an eye out for that as we go through this because it comes up again and again. But I think this passage has a lot to teach us, if we'll listen to it, about discrimination, whether we do that based on races has been done in the past, on gender, on whatever we want to like put in there, you know? Anytime that we, that folks in Acts, anytime that folks in Acts put up a barrier, it gets knocked down. That's one thing that I see frequently in these passages, is anytime somebody puts up a barrier, says, no, you can't, then the Holy Spirit knocks that down very quickly. So thoughts, questions, observations? I think Zoom doesn't lend itself very well to a whole lot of good conversation, the way that if we were all gathered around a table, not six feet apart, would, you know? But feel free to speak. I think, I think that this is a lot of food for thought for us when it comes to reading these passages and thinking about how to read this as God's people nowadays. What is it about this passage? What does it have to say to us? You know, I think we constantly find new ways to exclude, that it can be hard sometimes to want to be a little more open to stuff. That's at least one of the things that I saw in this passage. You know, there's also all sorts of stuff about evangelism in it, isn't there? Philip is told to just go up and, you see that chariot that's going there? Like, run up to it and talk to this person. But well, if that had happened to me, I'd be like, hold on, whoa, 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 timeout. Why do you want me to talk to this? What is it about that, like, you want me to go talk to this foreigner in this chariot, and it's moving? You know, I'm not that fast, I can't run like that. I would have a ton of different things that I would throw up as a barrier as to, oh, I can't do this, what are you talking about, do this? But Philip does it as he's told, and great things happen. One other thing that I'll bring up again later on as we go through these stories today is there are big implications when we hear of minor characters in this book. So the Ethiopian unit, there's a guy named Eusebius. And Eusebius, he was one of the first bishops of the church. And he had a passage that he read, a book that he wrote, rather, that was called, is just his church history, ecclesiastical history, it was called. And so it was written a little bit after the book of Acts, but kind of a couple generations passed, and he was basically trying to do the same thing as Luke here in Acts of giving a history of the early church. And Eusebius tells us that the Ethiopian unit converted most of Ethiopia to Christianity. Whenever he returned back to Kush, he was responsible for converting a whole lot of the early church, or the early Ethiopians there, to the church. So that's a fascinating thing as well. But more on that a little later. Shall I pause for some questions or observations, thoughts? I keep hoping y'all will talk to me. Okay, well, let's move on to chapter nine. We spent a lot of time on it, but the thing is, with so many of these stories, we could spend the whole time easily on just that passage, you know, just the Ethiopian eunuch. I like to think that his name was Ee, you know, Ethiopian. You got to give people in the Bible nicknames, makes them seem more real. That and my wife's grandfather's name was Albert Earl, and everybody, he just went by Ee. And so you never hear of anybody that goes by Ee unless it's Ee Cummings. But anyway, let's see, can I get a volunteer to read for us this next passage? Chapter nine, verse one through verse nine, one through nine.
I will.
Take it away.
Okay. "Meanwhile, Saul, still breathing threats and murder against the disciples of the Lord, went to the high priest and asked him for letters to the synagogue at Damascus, so that if he found any who belonged to the way, men or women, he might bring them bound to Jerusalem. Now, as he was going along and approaching Damascus, suddenly a light from heaven flashed around him. He fell to the ground and heard a voice saying to him, 'Saul, Saul, why do you persecute me?' He asked, 'Who are you, Lord?' The reply came, 'I am Jesus whom you are persecuting. But get up and enter the city, and you will be told what you are to do.' The men who were traveling with him stood speechless because they heard the voice but saw no one. Saul got up from the ground and threw his eyes, and though his eyes were open, he could see nothing. So they led him by the hand and brought him into Damascus. For three days he was without sight, and neither ate nor drank."
Thank you. So let's pause right here to talk about this. Um, so uh, let's uh, let's pause right here to talk about this real quickly. Saul, do you remember when we saw Saul the first time in Acts?
Mm-hmm.
Where was that, Eunice?
At the stoning of Stephen.
Stoning of Stephen, yeah. He was, they, the, the men who stoned Stephen laid their cloaks at the feet of a man named Saul and he approved of their killing him. Um, and so here we have Saul again, still breathing threats and murder against the disciples of the Lord, going to the high priest and asking him for letters to the synagogues at Damascus, so that if he found any who belonged to the way, men or women, he might bring them bound to Jerusalem. Um, lot going on right there because the way is the first name that we're given for this, this Jewish sect that's following Jesus. Um, they're not called Christians at this point yet, uh, simply those who are part of the way. Um, so that's the oldest name for Christians actually is followers of the way. Um, now it's important here that we um, we see, um, let's see, let me see if I can, um, I'll stop the screen share real quick and mute everybody. Um, it's so uh, we have him asking for letters to the synagogue at, the synagogues at Damascus. So Damascus is in Syria or what we would call in modern day Syria. Um, and so it's quite a far piece from Jerusalem. And uh, in the ancient Near East and the ancient Mediterranean world, you didn't just decide you're going to some other town far away and hope you could find a, a room at the Holiday Inn, you know? I, I mean, it didn't work like that. If you wanted to go anywhere in the ancient world, uh, you had to know somebody or you had to have somebody who could vouch for you, um, you know, and say, oh, and, and the synagogue would be a perfect sort of uh, scenario if you were traveling. Because if you got a letter from the high priest in Jerusalem, it would be like uh, getting a letter from, say, the, the President of the United States saying, "I vouch for this guy, he's good. Um, would you watch after him?" You know, like he, he's one of us, so to speak. And so those, that letter would have been as good as a credit card, basically. Um, because it would be saying, "You need to treat this guy like he's me." Um, and he's on official business, treat him as though he was me. Um, almost like we would think about the way the mafia is often pictured as working in, in movies and stuff, you know? It's like, uh, if Tony Soprano sent somebody, uh, then you better treat them as, as good as um, a, as you would treat Tony if he was the one there, you know? That sort of idea. This um, the, letters were very important i- in terms of um, if you could get food, if you could get a place to stay, if you could, you know, get anything really, um, beyond just, just happenstance stuff, letters were very important, which it, it comes into play later on for Paul, um, as we know Saul better, uh, as the name Paul. Although a lot of people think that the name of Paul, that it changed at his conversion, but it didn't, did it? Um, if you, if you keep reading through here, he's still referred to as Saul, uh, not as Paul. Um, and so Paul, uh, later on, as, as we progress through here, uh, the book of Acts is one of the, the key sources apart from Paul's own letters, um, where we get to know anything about who Paul was. And so uh, Paul um, has these letters and everything and um, it becomes important later on because he winds up getting some patrons who were very important, uh, one of whom was a proconsul, uh, whose name was Sergius Paulus. Uh, and it's possible, I, I'm not saying this is why he's referred to as, as Paul rather than Saul, but uh, proconsul would have been, i- it's hard to, to put equivalencies between the Roman world and the US, uh, but the, the office of proconsul uh, would have been somebody kinda like uh, John McCain or uh, back in the day, a little further back, Bob Dole, you know? If y'all remember Bob Dole. Um, or, or uh, i- i- anyway, there, there's a lot of, proconsul was a very important person that, who had legions of troops at his disposal. Um, he was not up there with the emperor, but he was above a senator. Um, and there was this guy named Sergius Paulus, uh, who is likely befriended Paul and became uh, one of his benefactors and uh, likely gave him letters as he went around the Mediterranean world because most of those places where Paul travels to are also places where there's a, a legion of troops that are loyal to Sergius Paulus. Um, so there's all sorts of, of interesting historical stuff that, who knows if it actually is the reason, but there's a lot of, of things outside of the Bible too, that, that give us all sorts of, of possibilities and, and interesting information, um, when it comes to, to trying to figure out some of all this. But that, that letters thing is, is very important when he's sent, um, with letters from the high priest to Damascus. Um, and so we uh, we see this, this Damascus Road experience that happens here. Um, and uh, Saul was seeking ways to extend that persecution that he began in Jerusalem. Um, one interesting thing that I noticed here, uh, let me go ahead and unmute everybody, uh, is that Paul or Saul rather, I, I'll use the, the names interchangeably. Saul goes to Damascus to track down, like a bounty hunter, to track down Christians so that he can bring them bound in prison, uh, back to Jerusalem where they would likely be executed, uh, much like Stephen was, you know? And so he's going up there for that reason. And then he has this, this Damascus Road experience, this blinding light knocks him off his horse, um, and he can't see for three days. Um, it, it reminds me that uh, what God wants us to do may oftentimes be remarkably different than what we think God wants us to do, you know? Um, have you ever had an experience like that? Where you thought God wanted you to do one thing and then it turns out to be totally different what God actually wanted you to do? Um, oftentimes it's, it's only in hindsight that, that we realize these things. But um, anyway, sometimes the uh, the things that we think God wants us to, to do, um, wind up being totally different than what God actually wants us to do. Um, okay, so let me move us on a little more quickly here. Uh, verse ten, "Now there was a disciple in Damascus named Ananias. The Lord said to him in a vision, 'Ananias!' And he answered, 'Here I am, Lord.' The Lord said to him, 'Get up and go to the street called Strake, and at the house of Judas look for a man of Tarsus named Saul.'" At this moment, he's praying, he's seen a vision, he's seen in a vision a man named Ananias come in and lay his hands on him so that he might regain his sight. But Ananias answered, "'Lord, I've heard from many about this man, how much evil he's done to your saints in Jerusalem, and here he has the authority from the chief priest to bind all who invoke your name.'" But the Lord said to him, "'Go, for he's an instrument whom I've chosen to bring my name before Gentiles and kings and before the people of Israel. I myself will show him how much he must suffer for the sake of my name.'" So Ananias went and entered the house. Um, I, I'll, I won't read the whole thing there, but so uh, again, we have here who's in and who's out, who's included and who's excluded. And here we have Saul and Ananias, and Ananias being told by the Holy Spirit, you know, uh, "Go and, and put your hands on this guy named Saul so that he regains his." Whoa, 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 what are you, what do you mean, Lord? Uh, don't you know who this guy is? This guy's not inside, this guy is outside, this guy is beyond the pale, you know? Like, he is not an insider, he's an outsider, he's a bad guy, not a good guy. And, and what does God say? God says, "I know who he is," right? Like, once again, we get another thing about the insiders trying to keep out the outsiders, trying to protest about who is allowed to be included in God's kingdom. I find it really fascinating just throughout how many times this happens. Um, now Ananias here, um, becomes a major part of God's plan, even though he's a bit of a minor character, uh, because without Ananias, there would be no Saint Paul, as we know him would there. So I mean, this is a minor character in, in this, this narrative. Um, but he plays a major role. Once again, we see we're a minor person, this person that doesn't, that Luke doesn't even give much detail to. He, he does give us a name for this guy at least, um, different Ananias than the Ananias in Sepira, right? Um, but Ananias nonetheless, uh, he's, he's told to go and, and help out this guy Saul. And he says, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, I don't wanna do that. Don't you know, you can't do that, God." How often do we put limits on what God says to do or what God says God can do? And we say, "No, God, you can't do that." I mean, it happens more often than, than we give it credit, um, if we're honest, I think. Um, okay, so uh, Ananias goes and lays his hands on Saul and immediately, I'm on verse eighteen, "Something like scales fall from his eyes and his sight was restored, and he got up and was baptized." Got up and was baptized, does that sound like EE, the Ethiopian eunuch? He was baptized too. Baptism becomes a very key thing here and it becomes that thing that unifies everybody. Baptism and the Holy Spirit become that thing that takes these two people that were separate and makes them uh, one cohesive unity. Um, baptism is that one thing that, that does that and it still functions that way for us now, even people who are different in terms of their, the color of their skin, the whatever, whatever differences we might put there, um, baptism is the one thing that really unifies us more than anything else, which is why I get so upset whenever so many uh, Baptists that I know use it to divide us, you know? Like, "Oh, well, you weren't baptized just the same way that I was, therefore yours is not good enough, you're excluded."
So you have to be rebaptized.
Yeah, you have to be rebaptized. Your baptism wasn't valid, uh, it wasn't just like mine. Well, that's silly in my opinion. That's why I'm glad in the Methodist church, as long as you were baptized in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, it's a valid baptism. Um, you know, and we recognize that. Um, and I, that's why I think it's, throughout, again, i- it, it becomes, this book of Acts seems to be all about who's in and who's out. And it never tells you who's out because it just keeps telling you about how many different people and different sorts of people are in. Um, and, and it tells you about how dense the uh, the disciples and the people who think that they're the, the gatekeepers and the insiders happen to be, you know? Whether it's Ananias, whether it's Saul, whether it's whoever. Um, here in this situation, Saul's now the outsider instead of the insider. Um, so uh, let's see. Uh, "After some time passed, the Jews plotted to kill Saul, but their plot became known to him. They were watching the gates day and night so that they might kill him. But his disciples took him by night and let him down through an opening in the wall, lowering him in a basket." So now Saul has gone full circle. He's gone from being the hated enemy of Christians to being a Christian. Um, I, I, the best way I can think to relate to this is, i- it's as though Mike Sheshevsky became the coach of the Tar Heels, you know?
Terrible.
Yeah.
Terrible.
Wouldn't that be, I know, I know, all y'all, all y'all Carolina fans out there would, would hate that as much as us Duke fans would hate that, you know? Like, there would be no winning. That's Paul or Saul in, in this situation, you know? Like, he's the outside, he's, he's not an insider with the church yet because he's that guy who was coming up here to kill us. He's like, uh, you know? But then the people who he was the insiders with, he's not that either. In fact, they're wanting to kill him, you know? Uh, it'd be like Coach K going back to, to Durham if uh, he was the coach of the Tar Heels, that, nobody would like him. People in Chapel Hill wouldn't like him, people in Durham wouldn't like him, just be up the creek, you know? Uh, that's a lot of the, the, I, I mean, it's a, I, I try to, to joke around and add some, some humor to things, but um, you know, it, it's a real situation for, for Saul. Uh, he has to be lowered down the, the walls of Damascus, um, in a basket at night because um, the, the Jews are wanting to kill him. Um, and so uh, so then we, when he had come to Jerusalem, he attempted to join the disciples. He attempted to join the disciples. "And they were all afraid of him, for they did not believe that he was a disciple. But Barnabas took him, brought him to the apostles, and described for them how on the road he had seen the Lord who had spoken to him, and how in Damascus he had spoken boldly in the name of Jesus. So he went in and out among them in Jerusalem, speaking boldly in the name of the Lord. He spoke and argued with the Hellenists, uh, but they were attempting to kill him. When the believers learned of it, they brought him down to Caesarea and sent him off to Tarsus, back to his hometown. Send that boy back to where he belongs. Come on, we can't deal with him anymore and his craziness." Meanwhile, the church throughout Judea, Galilee, Samaria had peace and was built up, living in the fear of the Lord and in the comfort of the Holy Spirit, it increased in numbers. So we get another of those little statements that Luke gives us, the summary of things. But so he's got two attempts on his life at this point. The first one from the, the Jews in the synagogues in Damascus and the other from the Hellenists, uh, this same group that stoned Stephen, this same group who he held their coats while Stephen was stoned, uh, they're now gonna kill Saul. Um, and so he has to flee and he goes to, i- it's interesting, they brought him down to Caesarea. So if you look on a map, Jerusalem's like down here, but Caesarea's up here. And it's like, so Caesarea's north of Jerusalem. Uh, however, in elevation, uh, everybody always, Jerusalem always gets referred to as the city of Mount Zion, you know? You, you ascend to go to Jerusalem, uh, and so they see it as going down, uh, i- in elevation, so to speak, and, and importance too for uh, the Jewish mind of going down from Jerusalem to elsewhere. Caesarea was right on the, the coast, uh, kinda near uh, Tel Aviv, uh, what we would know as Tel, it's not on the, but Caesarea Maritima is the name of that one. And we get, uh, an interesting thing here is another minor character, Barnabas. Uh, where did we see Barnabas before? Anybody remember?
On the road to Damascus.
Well, yeah, the road to Damascus, he was apparently there, uh, but he was also in there just before Ananias and Sepira. He was the good example, the positive example of what to do. He sold- He sold a piece of land and he laid the money at the disciples' feet. So so we see Barnabas showing back up here and Barnabas is taking a risk. He's taking a big risk, isn't he? He's defending the indefensible. He's coming to to Saul's defense and saying, look, you know, this guy is is, yeah, he was crazy before, but, you know, we got a good thing here. You need to hear him out. And so Barnabas takes a big risk to help one of the weak ones in the community. And it makes me wonder why we don't take more risks ourselves to help those who are are weak and vulnerable. Because, I mean, that's what Saul is at this point, even though he had been strong and powerful and an insider. Now he's a weak and and a worrisome outsider. And it was a risk to to help him, just as the people, the Christians in Damascus risked whenever they dropped him down in a basket over the wall of the city at night, whenever he was trying to be killed by the the people there. So that idea of risking for the weaker folks in society and in the churches is an important thing and not one that we should just gloss over quickly. So we already see a prelude, so to speak, of Paul being in dangerous situations and people trying to to kill him. And so then we get, then the scene breaks after this to to Peter. So we, Paul kind of, the scene switches and Paul's off the scene now, back headed to Tarsus because everybody's trying to kill him wherever he goes. And Peter is back on the scene here. And Peter went here and there among all the believers. He came down also to the saints living in Lydah. And there he found a man named Aeneas, who had been bedridden for eight years before he was paralyzed. Peter said to him, Aeneas, Jesus Christ heals you. Get up and make your bed. That verse always makes me laugh, get up and make your bed. And immediately he got up and all the residents of Lydah and Sharon saw him and turned to the Lord. Now in Joppa, there was a disciple whose name was Tabitha, which in Greek is Dorcas. Most unfortunate name in Bible, you know, Dorcas, sorry, I'm still a middle schooler at heart when it comes down to it. And she was devoted to good works and acts of charity and she became ill and died. And Peter goes and and goes into her room and he puts everybody else outside. He kneels down and prays and he says, Tabitha, get up. And she opened her eyes and seeing Peter, she sat up. He gave her his hand and helped her up and then calling the saints and widows, he showed her to be alive. This became known throughout Joppa and many believed in the Lord. Meanwhile, he stayed in Joppa for some time with a certain Simon, a tanner. I don't want to talk too much here about miracles, but this is a good spot to kind of delve into that for a minute. One thing that's important here in the book of, you got, even in our world, you got two different kinds of miracles, let's say. You have miracles that are supernatural or above the natural world. Like, there is no explanation as to how any of this could ever come about. A good example is like, let's say, the the parting of the Red Sea with Moses and the Israelites. So supernatural would be just, you know, Moses gets there and boom, the sea parts and they walk across on dry land. Another way of looking at it would be that it might be a supra natural, S U P R A natural, meaning God working through some. So let's say there's just a big wind that comes up and and it drives the water out and it's like, oh, well, look at that. So you could look at that miracle of the parting of the Red Sea in two different ways. You could say, oh, well, there's a scientific way of explaining it away. Or you could say, no, there's no scientific way to explain that. Who knows? We'll we'll never know. I mean, our modern world and and Western world is very skeptical, especially post the Enlightenment, about things that are inexplicable. We like to try to be able to explain everything. But the point that that Luke is making here in the early church, I think, is that God and the Holy Spirit and the actions that happen in this new community are are miraculous via both ways, supra naturally and supernaturally. There's some things that nobody can explain that show that it is God coming down and intervening in those events of human history in a way that can only be explained by saying it's inexplicable. But there are also some other miracles that that could be explained a little easier. So you get both in the book of Acts. So I don't want to dwell too long on the miracle thing, but I wanted wanted to to mention that. One other thing that stands out to me when I'm reading through this, verse 43, the last verse there of chapter nine. Meanwhile, Peter stayed in Joppa for some time with a certain Simon. Who knows what a tanner is? Yeah, he takes animal skins and turns them into leather. Do you know how that happened or what what has, what you have to do to, Janice, you might, with all your, with the cows in your backyard, right? What, in in the ancient world, do you know what you would have to do in order to to make cows' skin into leather that could be used for stuff? Wanda, you, here, let me unmute you. Were you, were you saying something, Wanda? There you go.
It's a long, stinky process. I know that the hides that they turn into the drum. I've heard that they actually use urine.
Uh huh. That's what it is. It has to be soaked in vats of stale urine for weeks.
In Wilkes County, we had a tannery. It was downtown near the Yadkin River before the flood took it out. It caused odors for miles around.
Like, even even today, tanneries are very stinky. Like, there are laws in place that that apply to tanneries and pig farms. If you've ever smelled pig farms, you'd never forget that smell. But tanneries still, even today, even though they don't use stale urine to soak the hides in, the chemicals that they, is still very, very foul and putrid. And in the ancient world, the people who were tanners were the, like, nobody wanted to be around them. It would be worse than being a trash collector in our day. And so, I mean, nobody wanted to be around these stinky people. But that's who Peter's staying with, isn't it? It's another outsider that's in here. It's amazing how much, how many ways Luke tells us and focuses on the the outsiders that are that are here in all this. Can I have 10 more minutes? I know we're we've gone over the hour thing, but can I have 10 more minutes? And I'll try to get through Peter and Cornelius.
My iPad's about to die, so if I disappear, that's where I am.
Okay, no worries. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk so much today.
I was also going to say that it really made a great hiding place. People would want to come find Paul there.
Yeah, well, Peter. But guess what else? Paul was a a tent maker, we're told. And what do you do, what do you make tents out of in the, in antiquity? You make them out of animal hide. And so Paul was likely wrapped up in being a tanner some as well. Well, we'll say a whole lot more about that later on. But so Caesarea, there's a man named Cornelius, a centurion of the Italian cohort, as it was called. So this guy, we already know, is a Gentile. He's, he he's a high up officer. He's a centurion, that means he's over 100 troops. You know, so this guy's a high ranking officer in the Roman army. And but we're told he was a devout man who feared God with all his household and who gave alms generously to the people and prayed constantly to God. Okay, another outsider. He's Roman, he's not just Roman, he's in the Roman army, the same people that crucified Jesus, you know? He is as outside of an outsider as you can get. However, he's also one of these god fearers, one of these people who would have been in the temple courts, much like that Ethiopian eunuch. But who, I I mean, and I'll just be blunt for the sake of of time here. So he was also likely uncircumcised. And that's what kept him out of being able to be involved in the the temple. So much like that Ethiopian eunuch, because of just whatever, you know, was his situation down there. As crazy as it sounds to us, as if that should matter nothing, because who wants to even know about that, right? We all turn into to 12 year old girls who just don't want to hear about anything like that. Me and Jennifer have a fun time whenever things come up about boys and girls, you know? And I have two adolescent girls and they they just don't don't want to hear about anything like that. And anyway, it it's it's funny, though, because this guy is an as outsider of an outsider as you can get also, much like that Ethiopian eunuch. Because he also didn't fit in with the sexual purity laws that the temple had. So we get another guy who's an outsider. And then he gets this vision and is told, your prayers and your alms have ascended as a memorial before God. Ascended to Joppa for Simon, who's called Peter. He's lodged with Simon a tanner, whose house is by the seaside. And when the angel spoke to him, left, he called two of his slaves and a devout soldier from the ranks of those who served him. And after telling them everything, he sent them to Joppa. And then about that time, Peter goes up to the roof to pray and he becomes hungry and he wanted something to eat. And while it was being prepared, he fell into a trance. He saw the heaven open and something like a large sheet coming down, being lowered to the ground by its four corners. In it were all kinds of four footed creatures and reptiles and birds of the air. And then he heard a voice saying, get up, Peter, kill and eat. Don't, you don't even have to look at that next part. What's Peter saying?
No way.
No, no, God. No, 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 that's that's outside the bounds, that's excluded. That's, there's this barrier and I have never eaten anything unclean. And you're bringing up reptiles and and all these like crazy birds of the air and stuff too, and all kinds of four footed creatures, like, what the heck? I've never eaten anything unclean. And the voice said again, a second time, what God has made clean, you must not call profane. Reminding us that we don't make those laws as to who's acceptable and who's not. God makes those those rules as to who's acceptable and who's not. It's not us to judge. It's not our place to put ourselves in the place of God, is what I see with that time and time again. And this happened three times. And then suddenly the thing was taken up into heaven. And so right as as Peter has that vision, Cornelius's men appear and he goes and takes him to to Peter. One thing that I want to, so let me skip down to verse 34. Then Peter began to speak to them. I truly understand that God shows no partiality, but in every nation, anyone who fears him and does what is right is acceptable to him. I I think that's a key thing for us too, isn't it? What else do you think is going to happen here in just a minute? Let's look down at these last, remember, so a a pattern that we've seen with the Ethiopian eunuch is, well, I'm an outsider, I can't be included. Then we get a sermon about how Jesus doesn't exclude people and then baptism. And then so verse 44, while Peter was still speaking, the Holy Spirit fell upon all who heard the word. Peter's just giving a big sermon. The circumcised believers who had come with Peter were astounded that the gift of the Holy Spirit had been poured out even on the Gentiles, for they heard them speaking in tongues and extolling God. And then Peter said, can anyone withhold the water for baptizing these people who have received the Holy Spirit just as we have? So he ordered them to be baptized in the name of Jesus Christ and they invited him to stay for several days. It's kind of like, let he who's without sin cast the first stone, isn't it? But it's the reverse, it's like, can anybody withhold the water for this? What what can we do? Is there any sort of obscure rule in the book of discipline or something like that that says these people can't be a part of it? And here, these folks are added on too. It's amazing to to read this passage, isn't it? Just to see how the, there there's a phrase that gets tossed around a lot that is that scripture is there to comfort the afflicted and to afflict the comfortable. You know, and I find that to be the case time and time again. When you're comfortable, scripture oftentimes will conflict and and get you feeling very conflicted. And when you're you're conflicted, oftentimes scripture is there to to comfort you when you're afflicted. So I I I just think that's a powerful statement for us in these two quick chapters about who's inside and and who's outside and who's able to to be included and who's not able. So our our passage next week is going to be Acts 11:1 through 13:12. So that's what we'll be doing in session five next Wednesday at 3:00. Questions, comments, observations? Before we go, I'm sorry I've taken a little more than 10 minutes, but.
Again, I like the way you explain things.
Thank you. I try. Sometimes my explanations get a little fanciful. But I, I appreciate your attentiveness today. And it's it's always fun to read scripture with other people. You know what? I'll I'll just have one closing thought, if if you'll allow me one more little thing to say. Whenever I was, my first pastorate was over in the British Methodist church in England. And my my church in Manning Tree was right by the river Stour. And in between Manning Tree and Missley, the river went right through there. And this little place in the middle was called the Walls. They didn't come up with very imaginative names for things, but there were about 30 or 40 swans that were there. And so you could go and feed the swans and have a little, you know, ice cream or something. There's a little ice cream truck that often parked there and really pretty place. Anyway, one of those swans was back in the 80s, I think. The the people of this one town in Australia had gifted the the town of Manning Tree or the Queen, because all the swans are property of the Queen, had gifted the Queen with these two black swans that are native there to Australia. And but one of the the female, I think, had had died. And so there was this, just one black swan in the midst of these 40 white swans that were all around. And I would sit out there and look at that black swan. And I was like, oh, my gosh, I feel just like that black swan, being the, like, only American, other than Jennifer, in this little tiny town in England. And I would look at that black swan so much and just think about like how I felt like an outsider in so many ways. And the one thing that I learned really as being an outsider is that it's a great gift, not just to me, by encountering people that are different than I was. But in some sense, I was a great gift to them because they got to encounter something that was different too. In the passage that we read at the beginning, Philip and the Ethiopian eunuch, those are two very different people. Peter and Cornelius, those are two very different people, aren't they? Peter learned a lot from Cornelius, though. And likewise, Cornelius learned a lot from Peter. And so in that coming together of those two very different ones in the example of baptism and conversation, you know, much can be learned by just being together and in community with people who are different than we are. And oftentimes, we tend to gravitate towards people that are just like us, you know? But I always try to make it a point to hang out with people who are a little different than me too. Because oftentimes, that difference can be a real gift, you know? And I think that was revealed here in this passage too. That idea that diversity and differences are not a burden to the church, but really a great benefit to both groups, whether you're insider, outsider, or whatever. So anyway, thanks, y'all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Bye.
All right.
Bye.